Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the July 23rd, 2019 regular board meeting of the Methacton School District Board of Directors. Please rise for the pledge.
(inaudible)
By way of announcements, the public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. There was an executive session of the board held prior to this meeting on July 23rd, 2019 in the high school for the purposes of discussing a matter of personnel involving the evaluation of performance for an administrative employee. By way of attendance, we have all board members here, I'm sorry, except for Mr. Winters and Mr. Ryan. Recognition of guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Ms. President. This evening, we have one scheduled speaker. We have Mr. Bricker, who is here to give us an update on transportation. Mr. Bricker will be at the podium. You should have handouts in front of you. We will put the screen down, and he will present. So just give us a minute till we set up.
I'm giving you an update on the transportation for the 2019-2020 school year. Now, you should have the information in front of you. For tonight's agenda, we're going to go over to district transportation services, responsibilities, challenges, current status, focus going forward, and some key takeaways. The district's transportation services encompasses 82 different schools, 5,500 students. We receive typically throughout the school year somewhere between five to 10 changes a day, and right now, we're currently working on a two-to-three tier routing system. We coordinate special transportation accommodations for students, displaced students, special events, athletics, and work-studies. Overall, the district oversees First Student and eight third-party contracts that we coordinate to provide transportation services. The eight third-parties are on the agenda for approval tonight. Our responsibilities. So Methacton responsibilities, we have contract management and state reporting, call center staffing for this year. Next year, that will go to First Student, non-public parochial charter school communications coordination, communication slash notification to Methacton School District parents and students regarding start times. This year, it's important to note a couple things. The communication on the bus stops and the times and the bus numbers will be done strictly through Power School. We will also be providing the non-public parochial charter schools with their postcards that they can communicate to their families, however they choose, whether it's through their school messenger system or they send out the postcards. That's up to them. They'll be getting that information on July 31st, so they'll have ample time to get that out to their students. We also work with the third-party vendors. First Student maintains the fleet of vehicles. They're in the process of getting some new buses for this school year. I think we're looking at eight new buses. They provide proper-quality drivers, transportation of the students, routing, testing of the routes, and perform the safety checks, as well as work with the third-party vendors on communications for snow days and emergencies such as that. The challenges that we always face, there's the driver shortage. First Student continues to aggressively advertise and work to recruit drivers, and we'll get into that a little bit later. Routing. This year, we're looking to run a two-tier system versus a three-tier system, so we'll go into how that will work also. We always have the capacity and ride times, and obviously, communication is key with everything we do with transportation. Currently, First Student has 103 regular drivers that are projected for the start of school. There's 94 regular drivers on staff, two drivers that are currently on leave of absence, and there are seven sub or casual drivers. They have one driver that's being trained behind the wheel currently, expected to be done before the start of the school year, and they have four additional certified drivers that can operate with a CDL to help out with the buses. The current expectation is to have 92 routes at this point in time. Routing. The bell times have not changed from last year. Our goal was to arrive five minutes prior to bell time in the morning and try and stay ourselves early enough to get there 10 minutes early before leaving. What I said is, we're working on converting, or I should say, First Student's routers working on creating a two-tier system versus three-tier where possible. That would be a high school to Skyview. It'll be an Arcola to an elementary school, and a high school to Warsester. The goal is to get the buses to where the elementary schools without any delays, as well as avoid some of the Arcola/Skyview runs, which are short little runs but creates its own challenge based on the short time in between bus dismissals in the afternoon. Going to the next page. I just went over to bus capacity and ride times that the district has. There's no changes to this. I just want to point out that for K to 6, the ride capacity's 60; for 7 to 12, the ride capacity's 48. The Methacton School District students are... I'll talk to Deb. I'm sorry.
Basically, the ride time is the same calculation as the current capacity?
They're the same ride times. I apologize for that. I had them handed to me. I didn't check them. I'll be honest. So the capacities are, again, I'll go over K to 6. 60 students on a bus, on a 72-passenger bus. Grade 7 to 12, 48 students on a bus. The ride times are 50 for the Methacton School District students. For non-public, private, and charter schools, the students are not to exceed 60 as a guideline. However, based on the location, that's not always possible. Communications timeline. We already had our first notice sent out to the families via school messenger, letting them know that everything will be on Power School and that we will not be providing busing information to them. July 29th, we're going to send out another reminder to the families regarding the same information. July 31st, I said that we're going to already load it that we're going to be letting the non-public parochial charter schools get their busing information so they can start informing their families. By August 5th, our routes are to be finalized for the Methacton School District. August 8th, another reminder out to the families. August 14th, First Student is to bid the routes. August 15th, we're going to send out another reminder to the families. August 18th, route information will be available on Power School. August 19th is when we're going to start staffing the call center, and on August 28th will be the first day of school. The call center has four trained professional staff on August 19th. They'll be starting. It'll be coordinated by us, as well as some of the First Student staff, and we'll track inbound calls and outbound calls as we did in the past. Current status. Overall, we're on schedule with our timeline, which is about one week ahead of last year. The majority of students have been placed at stops and on routes. The rollover, which is the upgrade from first grade to second grade, has been completed as a point of reference. Last year, we completed that rollover on July 24th, so we're actually, that would have been tomorrow. So we're ahead of schedule on that. Routing of the kindergarten students and the new students is already in process. We've already started removing the opt-out from the senior parking, and we have routed all the Act 372 students that we have received. Specialized transportation will begin once the district is notified of the work-study assignments. That comes from the MCIU. Going forward, what is our focus? Our focus is going to be on drivers. We continue to review the needs, coordinating with the drivers. We're going to finalize the contingencies that we have in case any drivers resign right before school starts. One of the things they did last year, which was a great idea by First Student, is they staged buses at each of the elementary schools to support any runs that were running into delays, and those buses were able to run out and pick up the students and get them to their schools because they were all centrally located throughout the school district. Routing. Ongoing routing changes due to enrollment as students come in, students leave. We get information on the Act 372s. That'll always be occurring, and that occurs throughout this school year. We're going to continue to improve the routes for efficiency. We have the reporting that we look at, which the board will start getting once it's completed. The monitoring of the Eagleville Road closure to Collegeville Bridge work. Right now, we plan as if both situations remain as they are now, and we have the ability to streamline those once those roads are open. Capacity and ride time, we monitor them throughout the year. Communications will start, as I was saying, on July 29th. The board will start getting weekly communications on the ride times and the capacity for each of the routes that the schools have set up. The key takeaways that we have from tonight. The bus assignments will be available on Power School August 18th. There's 92 planned routes with 94 drivers and seven sub-drivers. There's a two-tier system that's being created for routes. Test runs for the efficiency as well as familiarity go from August 15th to August 23rd. Bus assignments to Methacton School District families will be via Power School only. Bus assignments to non-public, parochial, and charter schools will be completed by those schools. Capacity and ride time reporting will be done weekly and provided to the board, and a communication plan that the families and schools is in place, and we're actively doing it, as you can see from the timeline, and we're aggressively making sure that there's a lot of communications and people are aware of what's going on. And that'll end my presentation.
Well done, Mr. Bricker. Are there any questions for members of the board? Ms. Drummond?
Thank you for the presentation. I have just a couple questions. When you're talking about the drivers, it feels like that's about the same number of drivers this year as last year, or is it a couple more that we have?
We had 90 last year.
90, okay.
For 91 routes, so we're constantly using a sub-driver.
Oh, okay. So it's a little bit better then?
We're much better to start this year than we were in the past.
Great, thank you. And then, I just, you mentioned at the beginning about the call center staffing, but that next year, the call center responsibilities are moving to First Student?
Correct.
Okay. Can you just tell us more about that? I just want to make sure that, because I think we've been careful to monitor response times and follow-ups, and I just want to make sure that that's going to continue at First Student as well.
We can still monitor what they're doing. However, the staffing and the cost associated with the call center is something that First Student should be handling, given the situations in the past. I think Dr. Sosnovik jumped in and created the call center to help deal with some of the issues. The goal was to do it for one year, but then we needed it the next year. We decided to keep it last year. It worked out very well with some of the stuff, so we're going to do one more year, and then we can turn it over to them. Their staffing levels are getting up, so that will also help them with being able to staff that situation.
Okay. But we're going to make clear of the expectations regarding the response times and the follow-up and expect them to adhere to that?
Yes, and I have access to all that stuff.
Oh, okay.
So I'll still be monitoring it.
Oh, okay, great.
When they take it over, we'll still monitor it. They're just going to do the work.
Oh.
So instead of our casuals on call and us paying our casuals, they'll be responsible for staffing it.
Okay, that's great.
And I'll probably still be down there in the beginning of the school year just to make sure everything goes smoothly.
And then, my last question is, you were saying that on the 18th, the route information is going to be up on Power School. Is that going to be at the end of the day? Because I'm just imagining people might already call on the 18th, but then the call center won't be staffed till the 19th.
The 18th is Sunday.
Oh, okay.
So I'm not sure exactly what time.
Okay.
I don't control when Power School moves things live.
Okay, I didn't check the day of the week.
I think the sync occurs at 7 o'clock at night, so if we may change it during the day, we learned that, so we started even making our calls and announcement of the changes later so that people would then, when they looked on it, it'd be after 7:00 when the sync actually occurred. We learned that the hard way. We did not know that there was a timing on that. So I'm figuring sometime Sunday it should be out and live. I just don't know exactly when.
And then, we're going to be staffed Monday morning? Okay.
Monday morning staff, yep.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions from Mr. Bricker? Mr. Earnshaw?
Thanks, Tim. Two questions. Could you explain a little further these two-tier versus three-tier routing?
Sure. Currently, what we did this past year is we had buses that would go from Methacton High School to Arcola and then to an elementary school, and then it would run it in the same way, high school, Arcola, and elementary school. What happens is that presents a couple different challenges for us with regards to being able to do the activity runs. If there's any delays at one school, it impacts, like if there's a delay at the high school, it hits all the schools behind it. There's no real gap or space to catch up by running a high school to Warsester, let's say. All the Warsester buses will be on a high school to Warsester because if you're not in there 20 minutes early, you virtually cannot get a bus into Warsester because of the parent pickup lines. It's very difficult. So one of the changes that we're really working on was trying to get the buses to Warsester earlier. So by skipping a Arcola and Skyview run, they'll be able to get, it'll be a longer run for the high school where they can drop off, but they're going to skip that middle school or Skyview-type pickup stop, so that'll help. So it's just a matter, the tier system is how many stops they're going to do on the way in and out to schools. And that will not affect the non-public and parochial schools. They'll be the same, typically one bus to each of them.
Just to follow up on the two-tier versus three-tier, can you explain how that doesn't require us to have 50% more drivers?
Nope, because I'm not doing the routing, so I really don't know how they've done it yet. I think it's a part of it is the Act 372 has helped, so we're not running nearly as many students to the non-public schools. When Karen has been putting this stuff together, we've been able to find some of the different ride times and directions from the routes that we had last year, where the capacity may have been 40. We can now go to the 60, and that ride, like I said, will be a little longer, but there's no Arcola stop in the middle, so the Arcola to elementaries will still happen. All the other pieces will still happen, and we're still going to have three-tier routes. We're moving as many as we can to the two-tier to make sure that we're able to get to the elementary schools on time.
All right. So when we get to property next month, can you come back with some of the details around that?
They'll come out on the 29th.
Yeah. But comparatively, how many two tiers we actually have? Because that's not, you know, it's hard, when we look at that spreadsheet with the ride times, it's hard, you know, to judge how many two tiers versus three tiers are the way that's set up.
I can summarize that on the 29th.
I just want to make sure from a personnel perspective we're covered, and that's all. Thanks.
Other questions?
The other question I had was, with the changes you made on the high school parking, with waving your right to ride a bus, did you see any benefits of that or changes as far as routing, number of routes, bus size, bids, or anything like that?
So we decreased the ridership, not necessarily as many stops as we would have hoped, because siblings will still get, you still have to route the siblings that are going to be there, but it does allow us to, like I said, go to more stops for that bus. So we did get a benefit from that, and I think we had somewhere, last count I got was about 150, about 150 opt-outs. So, I mean, that's 150 students that are going to the high school that we do not have to transport.
Any other questions to my left? If not, to my right, Ms. Reese?
Two quick ones, one for you and one might be for Dr. Zerbi. When it says earliest for, on the routing slide, when it says earliest arrival time is 7:15 at the high school, so I remember hearing that some buses get there, like, really early, so at 7:15, they're allowed to walk on, like, they get off their bus and go into the school?
The earliest arrival time is the time they shoot the, they don't want to be there any earlier than 7:15 to 7:25. So what happens is when they are starting arriving early, we can actually see that in Zoner, and we're looking at some other options. That first view will be able to see exactly when they're getting in there. And so what'll happen is, the start time, let's say, they're getting there at 7:00 and the start time's 6:30. They'll move the start time to 6:45, and that'll get them there around 7:15. So they'll be tweaked, you know, you're going to have the actual run times during the school year, when you have actual traffic that you're dealing with on a normal basis, that'll change those routes. But they are adjusted if we are getting there too early.
Okay. And then, the other question was just about that August 18th date on Power School. Teachers aren't that same time, are they? I could just see the system, like, you know how everyone gets on there? No, they're probably a little later? Okay. I just was curious, because when you talked about we learn things, I could only imagine everyone's going on for the bus and the teachers, you know?
Any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I think my concerns, I'll defer until next month when we have more information. I am primarily concerned about the Eagleville Road, the routes, and how we're dealing with that, that we can cover that next month in transportation. Thank you.
So we've done pretty good with that so far with ESY and Eagleville Road, which is a good prelude to the school year to figure out how to get around it where the traffic is. I'll be honest, we're going to plan for it to be closed. We're going to plan to be around it. Until we get the heavy traffic with school being in session, there's going to be adjustments that we're going to probably have to make accordingly.
I don't know if this is allowed or not, but is there any way that we could ask for assistance from the local police, perhaps, from the beginning of the year with some of the traffic concerns that we have?
With related to the Eagleville Road, Eagleville Bridge? Well, there's a lot that we can do. I think it will be telling, I have a meeting scheduled for the 29th of July with the folks from Harrisburg who are overseeing the project. We should be able to get some reasonable information at that point in time and then decide whether or not we need to scramble and do a lot of work, or we're okay, or we can plan to be ready to revert back to the bridge being open. So I'll certainly let the board know after my meeting, you know, what we anticipate having to do.
That'll be one of the challenges after, if it's delayed, because we'll have everyone settled into their regular route, and then we'll have to change it once it opens up to different times.
Any other questions, Ms. Navarrett?
Yeah, just one more. When does driver bidding occur in that schedule?
August 14th.
August 14th. So do we expect that we'll have most of the, or all of the major route changes done by that time?
Yes.
Okay. That was a complaint that we heard.
Barring another school coming, non-public or non-charter schools saying, "We need, we're here, we're in your school district." We had a student try and ask for a ride today. The school was out 10 miles, so we did not provide, we won't provide transportation. If someone switched us to a school that we did not route, something like that could have a change or impact on it.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Bricker.
Yep.
That ends the guests and scheduled speakers for this evening. Please know that the Education Foundation was originally scheduled to present a check, and we're going to defer that to the August meeting.
All right, so we'll move on to our committee reports. For the Finance Committee, Mr. Earnshaw?
Thank you. The Finance Committee met on July 10th. The meeting was called to order at 6:33 PM. All committee members, except for Dr. Zerbi, were in attendance. The first topic was usual, was our monthly financial reports, where we reviewed the list of bills, treasury report, and expenditure and revenue reports, along with the healthcare consortium report, and there were no budgetary transfers for this month. There is one topic on the agenda relating to budgetary transfers that relates to the audit. Regarding discussion topics, we covered the accounting specialist update. Mr. Bricker gave an update on the annual audit. We talked about the Keystone Realty Group contract renewal, which is on tonight's agenda. Mr. Bricker reviewed the results of the district's recent bond offering. Mr. Bricker also provided an update on our budget projection from the 2018-19 fiscal year. We also then reviewed draft borrowing scenario for the master plan in Arrowhead. The courtesy of floor, we heard from Joe Bickelman, John Andrews, and Jim Mollick, and their comments are detailed in the minutes, and the meeting adjourned at 8:17 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Earnshaw. Property and Transportation, Mr. Navarrett?
The Property and Transportation Committee met on July 8th. All committee members were in attendance, as were Mr. Bricker and Mr. Fretz from Fidavia, Mr. Secalla, and Mr. Miller were there. We discussed the 2018 capital projects, the last of which are the punch items for the Arcola auditorium that are being completed now. That will be completed by the end of August. Under the 2019 work, which kind of rolled into 2020, we talked about quite a number of things, including reports from the field on the high school and Arcola projects, roofing, masonry, MEP work. Mr. Secalla discussed in detail the reasons for the higher-than-expected bids for the high school pads and canopies project, namely market conditions, labor shortages, and later than desired bid requests. They talked about how they've repackaged some of these projects and then bidding them outside, excuse me, bidding them for completion outside the summer window in other districts and with other entities has helped reduce the costs. Mr. Fretz and Mr. Miller talked about the investigatory work being done on the Eagleville facade. Those bids also had come in over budget, and they've reverted to a time and materials contract at a reduced scope to keep the, to keep the costs under $10,000. They expect to have a report back to the committee in August. We talked about some of the things you guys discussed at the work session last week as far as additional security doors and EGRS improvements at the high school. That design work has moved to the board for approval. We talked about the updated scope, cost, and timing for major renovations to the high school HVAC systems. That MEP work would likely occur either in 2020 or split between 2020 and 2021. That design work is on the agenda tonight. Also for 2020 and 2021, the committee reviewed design proposals to replace the remaining derated roofs at the high school. And then, finally, also related HVAC systems at the other building in the district, at the other buildings in the district. On the agenda tonight, too, for approval, is a study similar to what was done at the high school, which precipitated the current scope of work there. Committee also reviewed a revised master plan document. As I said last week, Fidavia was asked to come back and revise the next three to five years to show us what changes would need to be made if the scheduled Arrowhead repairs were to be removed from the master plan, assuming a renovation or new building at Arrowhead. And then asked them also to prioritize work if a smaller master plan scope were desired in any of those years. Under transportation, Mr. Bricker talked a lot about what we just discussed tonight, so I won't reiterate that. And under courtesy of the floor, we heard from John Andrews and Jim Mollick. The meeting adjourned at 8:22.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrett. Education Committee, Ms. Reese?
No report, no meeting.
Okay, thank you. Policy Committee, Ms. Hall?
There was no policy committee meeting this month.
Okay, for the intermediate unit, Mr. Ryan is not here this evening. North Monco Technical Career Center, Ms. Drummond and Ms. Reese?
There was no meeting.
Great. We have no student board representatives yet, and for the Methacton Education Foundation, we have Ms. Kralovich.
Tonight, I have a short report for you with some updates. Wanted to give you a little overview of the last year, the 2018-2019 fiscal year for the foundation. Thanks to our generous donors, we were able to award over $170,000 in grants to the Methacton School District, doubling what we gave the previous year. As a reminder, our grant awards impact all students in the Methacton School District, and we are very grateful for all of our donors, especially all of you sitting up here who donated to the foundation, and for kicking off our various campaigns last year. We appreciate everybody's contribution. You know better than most that this is a great start, but there's always more we can do. To continue to make an impact, we must continue to raise money and fund innovative programs that are above and beyond the district's budget, and we will do just that. In fact, we'll be kicking off, or actually, we won't be kicking off. In the spring, we will be starting a new event to help tap into Methacton's families. Even though we had a really great year last year, only 7% of Methacton families donated to the foundation. There's still a lot of work that we have to do to raise awareness about the foundation, and we're hoping that the Methacton Foundation Dodgeball Tournament will help us do that. On March 21st, we will be kicking off an event that we hope will grow into an annual tradition for the Methacton community. We will host the first Methacton Foundation Dodgeball Tournament at the Methacton High School.
Just so you know, I'm looking for a team.
This event...
If you can throw a wrench, you can, if you can dodge a wrench, you can dodge a ball, all right?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. We do appreciate having Dr. Zerbi's support and the district's support for a community event such as this. It'll provide us an opportunity to engage with the Methacton families who we haven't maybe, haven't reached yet, and showcase the programs that the foundation does fund across the district. Teams will consist of six to 10 people and require one adult or parent sponsor. We'll have divisions based on age with special divisions for Methacton staff and Methacton alumni, to name a few. And our focus will be fun. We'll have prizes for best costume and best team name, as well as our division winners. Stay tuned for more information as we grow this program. Our team registration should begin over the winter. Lastly, I want to let you know a little bit about our granting cycles that I've talked about. We finalized the dates for our granting cycles. Due to an increase in applications and to ensure a more effective evaluation process, we now have two granting cycles, one for the fall and one for the spring. For the fall, applications are due by October 1st, and they'll receive decision and notification by December 15th, if not sooner. We finalized the dates for our granting cycles. Due to an increase in applications and to ensure a more effective evaluation process, we now have two granting cycles, one for the fall and one for the spring. For the fall, applications are due by October 1st, and they'll receive decision and notification by December 15th, if not sooner. And spring applications are due by March 1st, with decision and notification at the latest by May 15th. I also would like to introduce you to one of our Foundation Board Directors, Mary Jane Barbone, who's spent a lot of time in this room. She's going to tell you about some exciting news for the Methacton Apex Awards.
Thanks. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I just wanted to update you a little bit on our big event that we're having this fall, which I'm sure that Nikki has talked about in the past. So our first event, our Apex Awards Dinner, will be on October 10th. It will be held at the Presidential Caterers on Germantown Pike. And as many of you probably know, we did have a great campaign earlier this spring to get the community involved and nominate people, because we want to honor people in the Methacton community. So we were very pleased that we had over 100 submissions from the community for potential honorees. And what we were looking for is community members who have achieved distinction, outstanding accomplishment, or made significant contributions within their professions and the Methacton School District. So we're very pleased to announce our honorees for this year's dinner will be, we had five categories too, so I'll name them by category. We had our alumni submissions, and chosen honorees will be Christian Jones from the class of 2000, and John Rafferty from the class of 1971. In our business category, we have JP Mascara &amp; Sons as the honoree. Community advocates, which are people from our community, are Jim Fallon and Marge Martinez, and probably many of you remember them from just a few months ago being here. They were the original founders of the Post-Prom Committee. The team club, or group from Methacton, this year we're going to honor the 1964 Methacton School, High School Football Team. Now, I know I wasn't in the district then, I'm not sure if anybody was, but I understand it was a great accomplishment. Our school district was very young at the time, and to achieve this accomplishment that they, they did, they, I think they went all the way to either regional or state championships. And then in our educator category, we have Cindy Castle, who is also a, who was also a graduate as well. She graduated in the class of 1984, and as many of you know, unfortunately, has passed away earlier this month. But we've been in touch with her husband, and he was able to talk to her before she passed, to let her know that she was chosen for this honor. So we hope that all of you will come and help us support and celebrate these honorees. And I have a save-the-date card here, so if any of you need that, I'll pass these down. And we hope to see you all there then. Thanks.
All right, moving on to Communications, Ms. Kelly.
Good evening. How am I supposed to follow that? So I want to share with you all the dates for Back to School Night. For Methacton High School, for grades nine and 10, Back to School Night will be held on September 10th at 7:00 PM. And for grades 11 and 12, it will be held on September 18th at 7:00 PM. Over at Arkola, Back to School Night will be held on September 5th at 6:00 PM. At Skyview, 6th grade Back to School Night will be on September 11th, and then 5th grade Back to School Night will be September 12th, both at 7:00 PM. At Arrowhead, Back to School Night is scheduled for September 4th at 6:30 PM. At Eagleville, it is at September 19th at 6:30 PM. At Woodland, Back to School Night is September 3rd at 6:30 PM. And then at Warsester, Back to School Night is September 23rd at 6:30 PM. You can also find a list of these dates anytime on our website, methacton.org. The information is right on the homepage under Featured News. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Superintendent's report, Dr. Zerby.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, there's a number, there's three personnel advisements. Please know that item number two and number three were added since the work session. So if you have any questions about those, certainly Mr. Regina can answer any questions you might have about that. But on another note, it should be of, it should be known that, as we discussed several months ago as part of the budget, budgeting process, I made some recommendations to eliminate some positions that, as you know, we are currently monitoring class size in certain areas, specifically 3rd grade at Arrowhead Elementary School. And I just want the board to be apprised that, working with Ms. Brucker, working with Mr. Regina, and the Registrar's Office, and also working with Dr. Engstad, coordinating what are the best plans and efforts going forward to help make sure that we provide, you know, a proper education for those children. If you, if you don't recall, when we made the recommendation, we anticipated that there will be class sizes at Arrowhead at approximately 25 students. So at the time, I believe there were 75 students, anticipated to move from grade two to grade three. We made the recommendation to reduce the position. So we have three sections of grade three at Arrowhead, where in other, in the three other buildings, we have four sections of grade three. And, and the, the challenge for us is making sure that, A, we put all the necessary supports and to make sure that all children have the opportunity to learn equally regardless of the class size. But more, more importantly, that we are going to continue monitoring that. And as of this date, we have one extra, what I call extra, an additional enrollment, where we have a total of 76 students. Now, we did inform that 76 students that they may not necessarily be attending Arrowhead, because that would mean that one section, as of right now, would be over the class size limit. Depending on how we review that and how, over the next week and a half, it goes, it may be actually more advantageous, based on the schedule, to suggest that that one student, you know, remain in Arrowhead, and, and we'll make the recommendation if that is what we determine. But we may also determine that, from a number of different things, to provide additional supports for those sections. And as we spoke, I mean, another, probably the, one of the last options might be to recommend that there is an additional teacher added back. You know, while that, that sounds to be maybe the easiest methodology with which to address any of the concerns that folks may have, certainly presents other challenges, and certainly, we're not saying that our fiscal concerns outweigh our programmatic and educational concerns, but we need to balance that information. So the closer to the deadline of, of this start of the school year will likely be a good indicator of where our decisions may lie. But we, we anticipate being able to provide a recommendation to the board in about a week and a half. And if we decide that, you know, personnel are associated with that, or other services are associated with that, we will work to secure those matters and then bring them for your approval at the August meeting. At this point, I know that I don't normally take questions on that, but I'll certainly open it up for the board if there's any questions on what I'm sharing right now. Mr. Navarrett?
Yeah, just two, I guess two suggestions. One, well, one suggestion. It might be worthwhile reaching out to the developments in that sending area to see what, what closes, what closings they may expect over the course of, not just the next couple of weeks, but I'm assuming those families will be registered, but over the next couple of months, maybe they have insight into whether there are families with school-aged children that might be moving in, so that'll help us inform our decision. And then any comments you have on where we would pay for the extra staff member.
Very good suggestion. Thank you. Any other comments, Ms. Reese?
I think we've talked about it at board meetings, but I know we've talked about it at education, and I do not know what the, what the, the answer is. I, I think, because I'm a teacher, and I've, you know, I have multiples among my own children, I'm very aware of dates and all these things, and I stress about it. How do we get across to people better that they need to register their kids ASAP? Now, please, I understand, some people don't move till July, sometimes they're deciding between private and public. I get all of that, but, you know, I know we put it on our website around March for kindergarten. I don't know if we need a ticker tape, you know, one of those running things that says, "Have you registered your child in whatever grade they're in?" Like, just because I get, now, I'm in a unique position, being an educator and having, like, three kids in two and a half years, that, you know, I was very aware, but I get that people are not. So I don't know how we do that. And like, to back up what Mr. Navarrett said, you know, with new developments, like, do we drop off cards that say, "Don't forget to register your child"? I mean, I don't want to cause a lot of work for anybody, but because all public schools are so budget-conscious, you know, and we sat here and said, "We have to do, you know, we'll add a teacher if needed and based on what have you," but it, it does make it difficult for us. And I know we can't control that August settlement date of a home, and I, I get it, but I would love if we could figure out just little things that we can do to make this process easier. One of them was my good friends. I was like, "You didn't register your first grader yet." I'm like, "Would you please get on the phone and do it?"
I think you make a good point. Let me work with my cabinet and find out how we can best figure out, you know, what is the best communication mechanism and, and timing related to that. I can't tell you that, you know, we're, we're doing everything. We certainly have notices, and we have a timely process that goes out about kindergarten registration for new parents. So that seems to be in a, in a cycle that is readily apparent and well-informed. But I, but I think you make a good point. Let us, let us look at that and come back with some, some, some recommendation on how we can improve the communication, because if, if it's a concern, and it, and it's not that apparent to people, even in education, you know, then we probably need to make an improvement in the communication. Thank you.
My, real quick, my only concern is when we're looking at Policy 126 with the class size, if we're voting to change the class size, we're breaking the policy, are we not? Or how do we go about dressing 25 students?
Well, the policy states that for grades three and four in elementary, the class maximum is 25. And so in the instance that I would recommend, like, we, like, we're, say, a week or two away from the start of school, and we haven't received any other registrations for 3rd grade at Arrowhead, you know, in, in, in talking with the people closest to the students and the family, I would look for a recommendation from them as to whether or not it would be the best long-term solution for the child and the family to remain in the school, and then to determine what other supports are needed to deal with a, a section of 26. And then I would report to the board that we're going to do that, and then look if there's any specific objections to that. Any, any other questions?
I just have a question on timing. If you're anticipating to have a recommendation within a week and a half, I'm assuming that you'll communicate that through email, since we don't have a work session until the 20th of August?
Yeah, so, yeah, there's, there's, there's some, there's some meetings that are scheduled that will provide some information to our building principal. We're going to be in touch with our, our teachers, and from that gathering of information and the other information that we have, and by that time, if we have any additional registrations, we'll, we'll make a recommendation of what we ought to do. So we have some matters that we think we can, we can help address some, some of the concerns. We just need to make sure that we run those things by the people who are closest to our students, and those are our teachers. So we're going to get through a meeting on Thursday, and then hopefully by early next week, I can have feedback from the teachers, and then we can share recommendations with the board through email.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Zerby. At this time, the board will take comments on board action items, so this is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda this evening. And bear in mind, the board may choose to respond to some of those matters as we approach those items in the agenda, so the more specific you can be about what you're speaking about, the better we'll be able to address it when the time comes. Okay, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand there.
Jim Mollick, Warsester. The bills, payment of the bills. There's one there from Sweet Stevens for $12,812 for write-to-know 11 invoices from April, legal fees. Don't pay it. Don't pay it. Your write-to-know process here is a disaster. So don't pay the bill. I'll give you an example. I asked for a copy of the feasibility study, which is obviously a public record. I got two attorneys and a paralegal evaluating the request. They're copied on the, on the request. I was told I gotta wait up to 40 days now to get it. Feasibility study. That's how things are managed in your write-to-know process. If there's something in that study that's a national secret, I think they put it up on the screen when they did their presentation. I mean, what, you know, I don't understand the delay and the holdup. Doesn't make any sense. Am I correct that all write-to-know requests are being evaluated and processed by the solicitor? I know Dr. Zerby knows that, because I read it in one of your memos. Any reason that's occurring? I'll help answer, because you don't answer any questions. So I gave you my question, I answered my question. Now I want to know what prompted it and why we're doing it and wasting taxpayer funds. Can you explain it? No explanation? That process, that practice should be terminated. You have a write-to-know officer. If you can't use him, find somebody else. If you gotta use two attorneys and a paralegal, something's not right here. $12,000 bucks. The state legislature convened a panel to study write-to-know and found that the median annual cost to a school district is three grand a year for write-to-know. You're four times that in a month. Something's not right. The minutes. How did the minute change come about at the beginning of the year? You know, the format now is, we used to talk about what we said. Now we just have opinions, and nobody says anything about really the substance of the opinion. Who, who did that one? Well, I'll answer my own question for you. You did, along with the solicitor, back in January, right? Back in January, you had a discussion with the solicitor. It was in your May memorandum to the board about how the minutes should be handled. Am I right? And that's why...
Dr. Mollick, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding. You're asking questions, but you're also providing answers. So if there's anything that you'd like the board to answer?
Well, you can answer whatever, you can answer whatever you want. I got people staring at me right now and not saying a word, so I'm going to maximize my time by answering my own questions.
Right, because we'll answer them when we get to that point in the agenda as we have.
Oh, oh, really? That's, that's nice. I appreciate that. So can you help me out on the minute piece? How much we pay the solicitor for that advice? Everybody announces, everybody used to announce what we would say in committees to the public. Now you just say, "Me and Joe and, and John just spoke." Is that part of the new strategy, the political strategy? Board policy 300 concerning conduct. You guys got to scrap that, because you really can't go forward with that, because it talks about violations of board policy, and you even want to give disciplinary action to your employees based on this. Well, what about the board? You guys have violated the board policy more than any people I've ever seen. So, you know, in my opinion, you can't go forward with this, because you're not, you're not in the same ballpark as these people.
Thank you, Dr. Mollick.
Sure.
Anyone else with public comment on board action items this evening? Seeing none. Let's move on. May I have a motion to approve the board meeting minutes for the special board meeting held June 4th, the special board meeting and final budget presentation held June 18th, the work session June 18th, and the regular board meeting held June 25th as attached? held June 25th as attached? Ms. Reese, is there a second? Mr. Navarrette, any comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. Fiscal items, Mr. Booker?
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, for your approval, we have the list of bills, the treasurer's report. There are no budgetary transfers. However, we are requesting that this school board approve the budgetary transfers for the 2018-2019 fiscal year as required by the fiscal year audit. The business office will supply our budgetary changes to the school board at the September 2019 meeting. We have the Keystone Realty Group contract renewal. There are nine 2019 master plan project items, and there's one master plan summer 2020 work authorization.
This evening, we have, uh, Mr. Miller from Fidavia. I, I just, I think it's important that, uh, master, 2019 master plan projects number eight and number nine, these were added of since the work session as a result of, uh, an indication from the contractor of work that's required. So, Mr. Miller, if you wouldn't mind sharing with the board, 'cause this was not reviewed in property committee, nor was it reviewed at the work session. So this is new information, and the only reason that we're bringing this to you is, uh, and Mr. Miller corrected me if I'm wrong, is that this work needs to be approved so that the, the project as it exists can continue moving forward.
Correct. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me this time. Uh, we, as Dr. Zerby mentioned, we have two additional C O Rs that we were made aware of last week and we wanted to go over. Uh, it's item number eight, which is approved tri-county mechanical, and it's a change order M C 002 in the amount of $30,248 to replace the existing steel condenser water piping with scheduled PVC pipe and fittings between the boiler room and cooling tower at Mc, in the fact, in high school. The reason for this is that as a V E item, we, the engineer reviewed the piping from outside, of course, from the outside surface of it, and he was comfortable with just leaving it in place, uh, from the condition it was. It looked good from the outside. Uh, so we retracted that piece of getting replaced per the project for project work. When the contractor disassembled the piping, we became aware that the steel pipe had severely corroded from the inside and said, heavily corroded on the perimeter of it as well. So after reviewing a number of proposals, we had another steel replacing like-for-like, and we also had, uh, that came in around about $50,000. So we went and looked at the option of going with PVC pipe rather than steel, and that came in at $30,000. So after reviewing the project, we were looking for, looking to recommend putting forward the scheduled 80 piping for that project. Item number nine, approved David Maines and Associates, uh, for a change order C R 001, and this is to an amount of broken as follows, $120,455 to replace the roof structure at Boiler Room, that's roof area number 18, at Methacton High School. Addition of $6,250 to replace five existing roof drains, and addition $6,462.95 for temporary roofing and protection. Uh, tear-off work on Boiler Room Roof 18 started on Tuesday, uh, the last Tuesday, and it was quickly established that the approximately quarter of the tear-off area had soft gypsum decking once the existing coal tar pitch roof was removed. It is Mark J. Sobek's belief that due to the lack of insulation and the high temporary nature of the Boiler Room, you've got vapor drive within the material that has occurred over many years and jeopardized the gypsum deck to the point where it, where it needs to be replaced. Uh, although Mark J. Sobek thoroughly investigated this existing, the existing conditions within the Boiler Room, they were not able to identify the extent of this deterioration until the roof was removed. The situation here is, is almost like a sandwich. We can see everything underneath. We can see everything on top. Unfortunately, unless we do extensive boreings of right through the whole roof, we were not able to see exactly what was in between. Uh, after careful review of the possible solution, including, including replacing the gypsum deck in kind, the team recommends replacing the existing deck with steel decking. Uh, we also have Brian Carlin from, uh, Mark J. Sobek here for if there's any questions. Uh, the reason why we did not look at moving forward with, going with more gypsum is because of the, it may actually end up just having to, yeah, become the same exact situation as it is right now. And because it is a high temperature with the boilers, et cetera, in there, you're driving a lot of heat in that space, and with no insulation on the top, it just broken down. They compounded, actually broken down to a point of severe deterioration. So, looking at the options, gypsum under the unit price that we had with the contractor would end up as being as extensive as over $220,000. So the better option to resolve this once and for all would be to go with the steel decking and replace. We have the cost of the insulation and the T P O already in the contract, but this one piece would be the only thing we'd need to replace.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Um, let's, let's take any questions on the number eight. Uh, Mr. Navarrette?
Yeah, so this was near and dear to my heart. Um, I guess, Mark isn't here tonight. Mark and I had talked when I first got on this board about our water treatment contractor throughout the district. Um, so I, I'll, maybe I'll get with you and Mark, and we can talk about what our water treatment supplier is actually doing. I believe the number that he gave me earlier was some number around like maybe $20,000 a year we pay. Um, this type of middle-market water treatment is not difficult. Um, the fact that we had such severe corrosion tells me that they weren't probably treating the system correctly. Um, James, how old was the piping in that cooling tower?
I do not know for definite, but I'm assuming it would have been replaced in 96 when the majority of the systems were replaced.
Okay. That's not that old. Okay. Um, cooling water piping should last much, much longer in a system like that. So if that's something we can have Mark follow up on for property next month, um, I would appreciate that. Um, regarding, I'm assuming that none of this is associated with the roofing work that's up there, right? This was solely associated with the, just the, the condition of the cooling tower, the piping?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I can understand why it wasn't identified. The only other question I would have was, uh, when you use PVC in that service, there's a specific kind of PVC that has to be used? Let's just make sure that we're using the right type of PVC in that service.
No, understood. I know, it's, that's the whole reason why we're going with the scheduled 80, uh, because it can actually handle that, the flows as well as the pressure.
Yeah, it's not, it's not just thickness, though. So usually it's C PVC, the chlorinated PVC.
Understood.
Chlorinated, but C PVC. Um, so let's make sure that we look into that.
I'll follow up with the engineer.
We're getting the right, uh, type of PVC in that system. Because if it's not, then it will just brittle in the sun and disintegrate on us. I don't have any more questions on that.
Thank you, Mr. Navarrette. Any other questions on number eight? How about, uh, number nine, uh, the roofing?
Am I gonna go first? Um, so a year ago about this time, we sat here and we talked about Roof 13 at the high school, and we had $150,000 worth of anticipated repairs, and I, the number, the actual number ended up quite a bit less than what we anticipated here. Um, in that case, we were talking about anywhere from 850 to 1,250 square feet, and I think we ended up less than the 850, right?
That is correct.
How much square footage are we talking about here? Because this roof is only about 8,000 square feet.
Approximately 25% of the decking, uh, once it was removed, was found to be deficient, and that was not including the areas that we had included from our under-deck inspection, um, that we included in the, the base bid price.
Overall?
Approximately 530 square feet in that roof area. Um, when we did our interior...
I'm sorry, can you please, uh, come to the microphone?
Apologies. Um, when we did our interior inspection, uh, we walked around, all, all underneath all of the, the re-roofing areas and set up a, a step ladder, and every eight or 10 feet, we popped a ceiling tile and used a high-power, uh, flashlight. So whenever we saw a condition that indicated potentially bad decking, we marked it on a roof plan, and then we also did infrared scans on the surface of the roof. So any moisture in the, in the roofing or in the decking would show up, uh, kinda like a glow, like, uh, um, uh, like the Predator. If you've ever seen like the Predator with like, it glows red and, when there's, uh, moisture trapped within the system. And then we also did core samples on top of the roof where we had potential for that bad decking. So when we saw something on the underside and we saw potential on the top side, we went around and, and took very large core samples, and we saw that there was potential for, uh, there was bad decking. At one point, it was repaired likely with the last re-roofing project. So we included all of those, um, areas that we saw from our under-deck inspection and from our, uh, surface inspection included in the base bid, and as we, that, that's plainly how it went.
So, so overall, yes, you were looking at around about 8,000 square feet of roof. So when you compare it to the number that you've got in front of you, it is a sizable number. I completely understand where you're coming from. Uh, with the first reiteration of this change order, we, it was actually over 135, 140,000 initially. Uh, so we have brought the change order down. The, the, the other reason...
Wait, before you go on from that, so we got two different change order requests in there, both dated the same date, one for about 130, or I guess total 135, and one for about 150. Which one is the right one?
So he's referring, he's referring to the change order request that was a, a brief summary, uh, with a larger amount, and then, then, then today, we received from your office, uh, the revised, uh, and more detailed
Yes.
C O R with a lower number, which is reflected on the agenda here this evening.
Correct.
So he wants to know, is, is the one on the agenda the, the correct, uh, number, and it relates to that C O R?
There was a number of conversations had offline with the contractor with the exact, this exact situation, that we felt as if it was a little bit on the high side, and what we wanted him to do is to actually break down the whole change order, rather than just having a lump sum, and actually explaining the costs for each item. So that's where, that's why you see the revised version that is in front of the board now is $120,000.
Okay, thank you. Continue with what you were saying when I interrupt you.
No problem.
Any other questions from members of the board?
On, on, I'm gonna keep going. I got, I got more. Um, so when we originally went back and we talked about this, we were gonna do extensive scans, and we talked about I R scans that we were gonna do, and we said we gotta make sure that we do them at the right time of day, so we can see the contrast in temperatures. Um, so our, our contract with Sobek for this was about $23,000, and we said that we were gonna do more extensive work this time than we did last time.
Mm-hmm.
I guess, knowing what we know from the roof that was right next door
Yes.
On, what was it? I guess with 13. Why don't we do some of the larger, why don't we tear up more of the roof when we were doing this investigation? 25% is a huge chunk, right? Last time we were talking about, it was a lower percentage
Yes.
Of the entire roof. This is, this is a big chunk. It seems like a big miss.
The scenario here is that Sobek actually, just as Brian mentioned, uh, per the remit that we had asked them to do, they went and did an infrared scan of the whole roof. That whole roof got scanned, and we've actually got the scan. In fact, I think I actually presented it at one of the committee meetings, and so they...
I, we didn't see the scan, so if you can bring them the next property committee meeting, I would like to see it. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And what happened was, with that investigation of the scan, plus the investigation that Brian was mentioning underneath, they actually did find one section. It was where a truss was located, or in fact, I think it was actually a beam, and it was a cross-section right where a, a column was. And right along that column, sorry, the beam, the two beams, there was corrosion and there was issues there. That was identified and put in the contract. Everything else in that roof was, like I said and I mentioned earlier on, it's like a sandwich. Everything underneath looked good, everything else on the, with the infrared scan on the top looked good. This was something, I know, and we've already...
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not in your case, right?
No, no.
We found this last year. I wish we would have found it ahead of time. It's obviously something we have to do. We gotta fix this roof, right?
Yep.
We know, we know the cars, we've been dealt here with these roofs, so we've gotta do it. This is just part and parcel of the whole thing. It's disappointing that we didn't find it. From a, from a position of going forward, you talked about heat in a boiler room.
Yes.
Right? A boiler room where we're properly insulated, and the boilers are properly insulated, and, and the piping is properly insulated, we, we shouldn't have those kind of temperature differentials, um, between the room and the roof decking. Is there, is there any effort, uh, to be made around further insulating, say, underneath the roof deck and creating some kind of, uh, space so we can avoid that? Because, you know, if, if we had wet gypsum, and now we're gonna go back with steel, we're gonna have wet steel. So, which was a whole other issue.
No, understand.
And we don't have to get into the details tonight. I'm sorry, we didn't get to discuss this in property, so, um, this is a little bit of my brain dump, but, um, it is something that we should talk. I mean, obviously, we've gotta go forward with this, but I do wanna hear more about the details when we get to that.
I'm on the exact same page as you. Uh, in this instance, we do actually remember the existing roof had no insulation on it. We're actually putting at least five inches on, on top of it. So therefore, your situation with the steel, I actually asked that exact same question, is gonna condense on the steel, but it's not, because it's actually gonna be within the insulation, which is gonna be no issue.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Miller on those two additional items? If not, thank you, Mr. Miller?
Thank you very much.
So going back to the beginning of the fiscal items here, um, are there any, let's do it this way, any fiscal items that board members would like to have considered separately? Mr. Earnshaw?
Bear with me a second here. Uh, item D. D and F.
You said D, E, and F? All three? Okay. Any others? All right. Can I have a motion to approve items A, B, and C under fiscal? Ms. Reese, is there a second? Mr. Earnshaw, any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. May I have a motion to approve item D, the approval of Keystone Realty Group contract renewal? Ms. Drummond, a second? Mr. Navarrette, comments from the board?
Please, well, before the comment, I just wanna make sure that the board is apprised, that there is a document in front of you that should, uh, explain, I know it's short notice, but Mr. Booker received it today, and, uh, it should outline some of the questions that were, I believe, raised, uh, at the finance committee meeting. So I do apologize for the, the late information, but we can only give it to you as soon as we got it.
Okay. Um, that was one of my questions. Do we have any information we requested from the finance committee meeting as far as the results of, of this firm? Uh, the other question I had at the time was whether or not the agreement, even though it's a renewal, had been reviewed by the solicitor?
I did review it.
Okay. Um, and I guess another question I thought of after last week's meeting and after the finance committee meeting is that we're incurring costs to challenge these assessments through this Keystone Realty, and when the assessed values go up, not only does the school district benefit, but the townships and the county benefit as well, with no cost to them. So has there been, ever been any discussion with some sort of cost-sharing arrangement in some form so that the district's not bearing the entire brunt of the cost?
I cannot confirm that, but I think that's a good suggestion, and we will do that. And we will report back to the finance committee and the board.
Um, and then, given that I...
That's county and township, correct?
It's county and the township, that's right. Um, and also, given that, you know, I've not read, the information just came to light, I'd make the motion to table this matter until our August meeting.
Is there a second for this motion to table? Mr. Navarrette? Okay, any discussions on the motion to table?
Um, just, just, I need to have some confirmation that, is there any, is there any issue that it will pose the district that you can share in the meeting here this evening if it is not renewed?
Yes, it would miss the August deadline for the renewals and the appeals that we'd have to submit. have to submit.
Can you explain what that means, Tim?
So the appeals have to be done in August, so therefore if we do not agree to move forward with Keystone, we would not be able to select the properties that we would be doing the appeals on.
So, sorry, Brian.
And you know they have appeals in the pipeline?
Yes, because they were engaged all last year, so they've been working on it.
Now, the data that we got today had a summary of, I'll say, wins for the last, since what, 2012 or 2013. The data in that document suggests that there has been no win since 2017. Am I reading that right?
We just recently had one that was settled, I guess, end of May, beginning of June, right in there. It was for 102,201 dollars that we received. So far, we've received 70,000. We're still waiting for the second piece to come in from the current tax owner. There's a question as to whether they sent it to the tax collector or to us, but they've already, they said that they've sent the check, we just haven't figured out who has.
Do we know when that appeal was initiated? I remember talking about it in finance, you're right.
It goes back to 2014.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember it was multiple years that that hundred grand encompassed.
Are there any other comments on the motion to table?
I just think when we look at, we had the solicitor review the information, I mean, unfortunately, it's the common practice of how it is in their contract and it's trying to change their practice. And so I feel like I do agree with what you're saying and the frustration in that contract because it's ridiculous. However, we have to change an entire practice and at this point, I don't wanna lose out on any income that we could be potentially having for the, so I think it's a bigger picture unfortunately in my mind.
They will not change their contract.
And that's what, and this is the only company that in this Montgomery area, or in this area that we, that deals with this, correct? It's not as if there's...
The only one that I'm aware of is the one that all the other school districts in the area use. The only school district with the ability to force them to make a change would be North Penn due to its size. And North Penn made the last change that they, and rather than have every school district that they deal with come to them and ask for changes, they made the change interlaterally for all the other school districts.
I think it's just an unfortunate situation and I agree, especially with the Shenondale wording and how they benefit throughout and their process. I just don't think we should, I think it's a process that we have to try to change moving forward.
It's possible, as Mr. Earnshaw suggested, that I think it's worthy of us, you know, investigating the county and the townships as part of the cost-sharing piece. I'm certainly, I think that's a great idea. But that in itself, you know, whether they do or don't, because we're probably the largest taxing entity of all three of us, you know, we gain, we gain greater than they were in this process. So, but I think it's worthy of making the attempt to do that, so that's a good suggestion. But administratively, we don't recommend you not passing the motion regardless of the challenge of the contract. That's just our recommendation.
All right. Given the additional information of projects in the pipeline, am I able to withdraw my motion to table? Or does it need to go to vote at this point?
Is Mr. Navarrett agreeable to the motion being withdrawn?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, I'd like to withdraw my motion to table.
Mr. Navarrett, you second that motion?
I do.
Okay. So with that, I believe the motion to table has been withdrawn. We'll return to the prior motion, which is to approve the Keystone Realty Group contract renewal. Are there any further comments on that item?
Yeah, just one thing. Can we try to increase our efforts in timeliness and understanding that if this had to get done tonight, that we, this should've been on the agenda probably for, in June or even May? That would be helpful. And just on information request, if we can just, if we had to get it from a third party, stress to the importance of getting it to us timely. I'd appreciate that.
I agree with those comments.
I'll move that to the May or June finance committee meetings.
Any other comments? Great. Seeing none, all those in favor? And the motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to master plan projects, may I have a motion to approve all of the items listed under master plan projects, Section E of fiscal for this evening? Mr. Navarrett, a second, Ms. Cancro, are there any comments from the board? Mr. Navarrett?
Yeah, I just, and maybe it's a question for James, and I'm sorry to ask this, Brian, with you sitting right here. Are we comfortable with Sobek moving forward? We've asked them to do a lot of work.
Of course you have.
We've asked them to do a lot of work over the last two years.
Yes.
I understand maybe we didn't investigate as thoroughly last year and this year we missed on a big chunk. So are we comfortable moving forward with them continuing to do this bid design work and this pre, you know, the scope determination work?
In this area, what we did is due diligence, we contacted a couple of other consultants in the area. There's not many that is not associated direct with a manufacturer. The one person, they just went and said, "We flat out can't do it because I'm too old." And so I just went, okay. So we have been looking around to get comparable prices for the work that's being carried out and I can vouch, I have no issues with Sobek working with they. They've, they've put their hands up when they needed to and they've worked with us throughout. And there's a number of instances last year where we had the issues with the contractor and they stepped up and helped us out resolving those issues that you are not even aware of.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Earnshaw?
I just wanted to reconfirm that, like, take item five, for example, where it's design services at just under 400,000, that if we were to decide not to fully move forward with projects two through five, for example, that this work is not throwaway work whereby it could be used three years down the road, wouldn't have to be redone at all. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah, that's absolutely true. Yeah, now, if we step away from the project altogether and decide we're not gonna do it, then yeah, we're thrown out.
I understand. I don't get the situation where, so we decide to do projects two and three now and then four and five, three years from now, and we gotta come back and say, okay, we need to redesign. I mean, there's no like technological lessons that could occur or changes whereby it's kinda been thrown away. You're shaking your head now, so, I mean, I didn't mean to make you get up again, but...
The whole intent is for the design to be able to utilize whenever you need to use it. So we are not gonna be just throwing something away. There might be a few, wait five or six years, you might be a change of code somewhat, but that's just gonna be a slight revision, not as if it's a completely new design. Okay? No problem.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving items one through nine for the master plan projects? And the motion carries, 7-0. And now moving on to master plan summer 2020 work. Can I have a motion to approve master plan summer 2020 work authorization as presented? Ms. Reese, a second, Ms. Hull, comments from the board?
And the board should be aware that the items were presented at the work session last week and the sheet that you had last week is the same sheet that you have in front of you today. Please know that there was a question regarding the, lack of a better term, of the pole building with storage area on the high school campus. We provided three, or two examples of square footage and design along with a cost analysis of what we think might be necessary. And we have Mr. Miller here to ask, answer any questions related to that. Again, you may recall that the amount that we are going to go out for bids on and prepare documents for is typically larger than what we've been awarding on an annual basis. But as you know, it gives the board the opportunity to award all of the projects when the bids come in or allow you the opportunity to, you know, pick and choose which ones are most effective and which bids are more, most appropriate to fund at that moment in time. And it gets us away from being less, being in a situation in a summer where we have less projects than we anticipated.
Yeah, I have no issue with the process here that we're gonna put everything out and we can decide later what we actually do. With the exception of this storage area, I think the numbers that we saw varying from anywhere from 700 to 950,000 dollars for an additional structure on the back of the high school, to me is a questionable justification at this point. I would like to revert that back to property for further review around the need for the bathroom, around what we're gonna do with, what other options are there that we can address this at a lower cost. But that number sticks in my craw a little bit.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, I would agree with that. That's one of the concerns I raised last week. You said there was some additional information about this?
We received it today and we emailed it out to the board.
All right. I assumed, I was on at noon, I assumed that was...
No, it wasn't at noon.
All right. So I would agree with Mr. Navarrett to, I don't know how we'd do that, but just, I would suggest taking this item off. If we need a motion, if I didn't make a motion to amend this or... I'm not sure. And you pulled the bathroom in with that, 110?
That's high school 21C, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to be clear, if it's 21C, the total dollar amount in 21C that we would subtract off of the 14 point, or 14,972?
Yeah, it'll be the 110. If we just wanna table the whole thing and just hold off on design, et cetera, as well, then it would be the 110 plus the 550.
Yeah, because 110 plus 550 is actually 110 plus 700 or 950.
Understood.
With the new numbers that we received today. So, yeah, I'm gonna pull that one back. HS 21C.
So it's 100, I'm sorry, 110, is that the right number?
The 110 plus the 550, so it'll be 660.
So 660,000?
Correct.
Yep. Brian, is that correct?
Yes.
110,312,393.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, so then, do we have a motion to amend item F1 to reflect the change from 14,972,393 to 14,312,393?
And it should be, I'm sorry, before you make that, it should be worded, authorize the administration to receive the design and document preparation work in order to present bid responses for the board's view and consideration for 14,312,393 in year three work minus item HS 21C. So that we just specific on the item and so that associated the dollar amount.
I so move.
Is there a second? Mr. Earnshaw? Any other comments on this amended motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended motion? The motion carries, 7-0. Moving on to personnel items, Mr. Regina?
Thank you. Number of items for the board's consideration this evening? We have one item for professional resignations. We have two items for job descriptions. These two job descriptions are for supplemental positions within the district. We have two items for employment professional positions and these are the two replacement positions for the world language positions, one German and one French. We have two items for a change of status for professional. These are replacement positions, one for the FCS retirement and the one for the art retirement. And there was a domino effect in that. We had one person accept the art position and another person filling that person's replacement. We have four change of status for classified positions. They are, all three of them, or all four of them are replacements. Two of them on the same retirement, of the Mattie retirement. One person received that job and another person received the job that that person left. So the domino effect again, one for the Walker retirement and one for a mid-year resignation that we received last year. We had held that person to fulfill their end of their contract till the end of the school year and they'll be moving on to that position this fall. We have one professional uncompensated leave, one classified uncompensated leave, five items for supplemental contracts, we have one classified substitute addition, one volunteer list attachment and two items for compensation adjustment.
Thank you, Mr. Regina. Does anyone want to take any of these personnel items separately? Mr. Earnshaw?
Items L1, 3, 4 and 5.
Okay. For simplicity's sake, I'm just gonna say we'll take L separately. Any other items that we wanted to consider separately? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve items A through K, MNOP, under personnel? Ms. Reese, is there a second? Ms. Cancro, any comments on those items?
I just wanted to thank Mr. Regina and Mr. Bricker for their work and happy to vote on their compensation adjustment.
I would second that comment. Any others? Mr. Earnshaw?
I would agree with those comments as well. And a couple of questions that I had from last week. Just on item I, the dates, the effective dates on here, are those correct?
Let me look at item I. The effective dates can change based on whether they're 10-month or 12-month positions often, but I haven't looked at them specifically. So you said item I?
Yes.
I apologize, my item I might be different on my sheet.
It's the uncompensated leave professional?
Yes, it's a medical leave.
But those dates are correct, that may, so it's going back?
That is correct, we're going back to that, yes.
Gotcha, okay. And that was all, thank you.
Any other comments on those personnel items? Seeing none, all those in favor? The motion carries, 7-0. And may I have a motion to approve item L under personnel?
Could you break out number two on this one?
Sure. May I have a motion to approve item L, numbers 1, 3, 4 and 5? Ms. Reese, a second, Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board on 1, 3, 4 or 5?
I had a question last week, just a little bit more information on, I know you can't, you're not gonna go into every one, but for the supplemental contracts, for the summer work, a lot of it makes sense to me, but I'm assuming none of it is jumpstart because we've done jumpstart separately. I know some was listed as ESY and I was just curious to give me some examples, like I can probably say that counseling had to do with placement of students, but that seemed like a very high number.
Yeah, this, so I may, are you referring to number four or which one?
Number three.
Number three, okay. So these, so we, I know that Dr. Cottone provided in the memo a summary of some of that, did that, did that out? Yeah.
I'll look into it and I will probably want it brought up at education because, just, just because. because. So I'll look at that more closely.
I just wanted to make sure that it did or didn't--
I tried to open everything and I missed that. And I knew you said you were going to get it to us, and just the document, I did not open.
I'll just-- I'll jump on what Andrea just said and say that I think it deserves a little bit more scrutiny as to the quantity and amounts associated with a lot of these summer contracts.
Any other comments or questions on items 1, 3, 4, and 5? Mr. Earnshaw?
Yeah, similar question that we had before, just the dates on numbers 4 and 5. So this work's already been done? Am I reading that correctly?
That is correct for both of those items.
Okay.
And if I can just add something to-- when items are items that we budgeted for, we put them on as this attachment, so you can see all the items that we budgeted for and what we spent money on. If it's something that is additional beyond what you've seen in the budget report, we'll list that item out separately in this part of the agenda. So I want to make sure that everybody is aware that if it's items budgeted, we still want to make sure we're reporting on all the supplemental contracts even though we had budgeted on them.
Right. I understand, okay. And I had similar concern with just the amounts on some of this, especially the summer work. As far as the summer curriculum writing, did the curriculum supervisor we just put in place help to drive this number down at all, or did it stay where it was in the past?
Typically, I know that question was brought up or a statement was made at the work session. And while it might appear that a curriculum supervisor might be able to take on some other tasks associated with the curriculum and programs, typically, the curriculum supervisor might help work with teachers who do the curriculum revisions and help guide them, but the supervisors don't typically write the curriculum for what the teachers are going to teach. We usually have, and in most school districts, we would have our teachers in teams to write the curriculum. So it wouldn't be done by-- it wouldn't typically be done by the supervisor. Now, the supervisor might work with them in their regular duties and help guide them through some of the processes, but they wouldn't do the work.
My suggestion is that, like we had said Andrea Rees said, I think 3, 4, and 5, just being able to know it in May, discussing this, and knowing the budget in May, reviewing it, so that we could come and report it in our committee meeting would be ideal. But then let's look at this now and just discuss it in the coming year so we can hash out and understand the explanations of it all.
If it's okay with the board, I'd like to maybe work with Andrea to go through all these and see how we can get some better explanation, provide a draft of that to the board, and then get feedback. If Andrea, if you're comfortable working with me on that, okay. That way we make sure that what we're putting in here is clear and understandable, because apparently it's not.
I think it's services that are already being done, and then we're voting for it. So it's a matter of we should have known it was going to happen--
You're absolutely right.
--and then vote.
Yep.
Any other comments on these personnel items? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Motion carries, 6 to 1. Now, can I have a motion to approve item L2 under personnel, the supplemental contracts for fall coaches? Mr. Earnshaw, is there a second? Ms. Reese? Comments from the board?
Ms. Reese, just, you know, want to make sure all the evaluations for every person who's returning has been completed.
The-- we-- all evaluations have been completed with the exception of one. And that's a matter-- that's a personnel matter, and we're not going to discuss that here this evening.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the supplemental contracts for the fall coaches? Motion carries, 7-0. Under curriculum and programs, we don't have anything. Under policy, we have eight policies available or up for a second read. May I have a motion to approve all eight of these policies? Mr. Navarette, a second. Ms. Drummond, any comments from the board? Ms. Hall?
I know there was discussion last week about Policy 126, and I just want to reiterate that this is one that we can keep under consideration for future meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Any other comments on the policy items? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. We don't have anything under gifts and donations or trips. We have a few items under transportation. We have a motion to approve items 1 through 3 as presented under transportation this evening. Ms. Drummond, and a second. Ms. Cancro, comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. And the student code of conduct, may I have a motion to approve the student code of conduct for the 1920 school year as presented? Ms. Hall, is there a second? Mr. Navarette, any comments from the board? All those in favor? Motion carries, 7-0. We have some dates for board members' calendars. We-- actually, I believe there's going to be a couple of revisions to some of these dates, so please pay attention to our advertised notices. Believe the policy committee may be removed and property may be rescheduled, so those two would be ones to pay attention to.
Kim, if I may, the property and transportation committee meeting is going to be moved to Monday, August 19th. So advertisements forthcoming.
Thank you, Mr. Navarette. Is there anything under old business?
Not really old business, just so I don't forget. Ms. Drummond, let's you and I connect about Northmont Go, because depending on what your plans are.
Yeah, after last week's presentation about Arrowhead, I went back and started relooking at-- or started relooking at capacity numbers and so forth, and mainly focused on the January presentation that Dr. Zerri had given. And I had a couple of questions that I hope I can get some clarification on. One is, with an Arrowhead new building, you know, with 625 or so about a building size for 625 students, would that never be considered the functional capacity of that new building?
It's-- I believe that the-- when KCBA was referring to 625, that was based on 25 students per section, and which would then be the-- would not be the-- not necessarily be the functional capacity.
All right. Could you ask them-- could you get me that number where that functional capacity would be? I'm taking a look at some of the slides you had in your January presentation, and the functional capacity at Arrowhead currently is 468. So I want to know with a building of 625, what is that equivalent functional capacity?
I believe they had it in the slide, but I'll get you that information.
I looked at the presentation, I didn't seem to-- unless I just missed it.
Was it in the June 4th presentation, I thought?
The original one.
Yeah. But we'll get that for you.
All right.
So functional capacity from KCBA?
Yeah, if you can get it to me for, you know, either the 625 or the 525.
Okay.
Those are the two options. And then, as far as percentage of functional capacity that becomes highly concerning, in the January presentation, that was identified at 90%. Is that kind of-- because right now, I mean, we have two buildings that are above 90% based on the January presentation, those being Warsester and Woodland. Is 90% the right number that to be looking at? Is that kind of common practice? Because KCBA had 85% in some of their numbers. So I'm trying to get an understanding of-- I'm trying to do some math here on excess classrooms under the various options, and that's a key component, whether it's 85 or 90, it has a fairly sizable impact.
Yeah, so-- and I don't have the sheet that you have in front of you that I provided, so I think I had two targets in that. I had a-- I had an 80 or 85% target, and then I had 90% target.
You had cautionary at 85 to 89.9, and then highly concerning at 90.
Yeah, so which is-- which is the same number that KCBA used, and which is the same number that's typically used in the plan con process and discussion about capacity of buildings.
Okay. And then the other question I had--
So 85 is typically the number?
85 is typically the number?
Correct.
Okay. All right. We've got, I mean, as I said, right now, there's two buildings that are above 85. And you look out based on the current enrollment projections, Warsester gets to 109 in three years, and gets 120 in eight years. So my question along these lines is, is there a plan being developed to address that as part of this? Because if that's going to require capital spending, that should be in any sort of debt and funding analysis that is being done. And I don't think it has been currently.
Well, so it's not in the debt and funding analysis, so you're accurate with that. There was, I won't say extensive discussion, but I did bring the issue up with relating to what we're going-- what we-- if we plan to build a building, as an example, at Arrowhead, what the size of that building would be, and our option to address that sheet that you have there of the projected enrollment challenges. We could-- we could either, and I remember saying this, that we could either build bigger here and reallocate students and move them around, or what we may need to consider is building for the projection of the sending area of Arrowhead and plus its neighboring sending areas, and then looking at Warsester independently and considering whether or not we need to add on some classrooms to address what those projections are. And honestly, we haven't come back full circle to even, you know, discuss that. But I will tell you that it's in the conversation right now with Fidavia and KCBA and the administration. So when they plan to come to the board on the 20th of August, that will be part of the conversation. And Mr. Bricker will be including that in the debt analysis. The-- and the recommend-- while we don't have it all finalized just yet, likely the recommendation will be that, aside from what the board decides to do with a renovation or a new building at Arrowhead, and the capacity associated with that, it likely will not be your recommendation to shift population where the growth is most potential from the Warsester based on the available land and what's on the books to be developed, and try to move those students and move everybody and another shift within this 10-year period. That's not the best method. It would be to build appropriately or to renovate appropriately for the projections in the Arrowhead and its immediate neighboring boundaries, and then consider what's needed in terms of classrooms at Warsester, thereby minimizing the disruption across the whole district and also minimizing the amount of transportation that would likely need to occur moving students from one part of the district to another. That's likely what we'll be recommending. I don't want to get too much into this because I don't have all the details for you, because I'm sure there's a lot of questions related to that. But please know that that is going to be part of our conversation on the 20th.
Okay.
Or at least the information we're going to be providing.
All right. Because I mean, you mentioned redistricting, that was a big con you had, and con being a negative in a lot of the plan or the options that were presented in the January presentation. Redistricting in less than 10 years. So you're facing-- under that scenario, you're facing adding on to Warsester. So if you could let me know at some point, like, what kind of additional classrooms would be there? Because I'll tell you, I mean, the preliminary calculations I'm looking at, if you build an Arrowhead, I don't have the right functional capacity number here, and I use 90%, you're at about 20 excess classrooms across the district with a new Arrowhead, based on what I've calculated here. That number will change, but--
Is that with no addition to Warsester?
With no additional Warsester. So that number's just going to do nothing but go up at that time. Granted, the grades don't line up, but there's got to be some consideration of, at some point, and I know we talked about this, but there's got to be some discussion about excess capacity. And a lot of it sits in our collar, and we've not addressed that, I feel, at this point. So if you give me that information, I'd like to update my calculations, and I'll, at some point, I'll hope to share that with the board in the next month or two.
I'll certainly give you that information.
Great, thanks.
Along the same lines of what Brian is saying, I understand what the recommendation from administration would be to not redistrict at all, but I would like to see if moving a neighborhood from Warsester to Eagleville would help. Like, I would like to see some of that--
I'm sorry if I implied that we wouldn't move anyone at all, but not a mass--
I would like to see scenarios as part of a bigger picture as it relates to this, because when it comes to moving a neighborhood versus having to add a bunch of classrooms and the cost of that, if you could include some redistricting scenarios between, you know, between adjacent schools, I think that could be included in the conversation.
Anything else under old business?
Okay, I just had one thing. I know Mr. Andrews had mentioned something last week about the former board member Howard Jones, who passed away earlier this month, and I just wanted to take a minute to recognize his contributions to our board and our community. He was on the board here for 13 years, and even after his time on the Math Acton School Board, his contribution to the community continued as judge of elections and through some of his community service work. I had the pleasure of getting to know Howard through my time on the school board, and I think many of us sitting at this table had interactions with him over the years, and his contribution will be greatly missed and felt for many years to come. I just wanted to have a moment of silence to remember him.
Thank you. Is there anything for new business? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to courtesy of the floor now. Again, this is an opportunity for residents to provide comments on matters that could come before the board. The board may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of courtesy of the
Jim, Malik Warsester again. Mr. Earnshaw made some great points and hit on, I think, the most important thing about the excess capacity, but it's not something you haven't heard before. We've been talking about it for years. The way you get Mr. Earnshaw, what he wants is something called a classroom utilization study. Then you know exactly how many classrooms you have. Because right now, from what I've seen, there are no classroom utilization studies for the elementary school, current, up-to-date classroom utilization studies. I don't know how you can go forward with a project like this without knowing your classroom utilization. Maybe you say it's 90%, but if you can increase your efficiency with your classrooms, maybe you knock it down to 85. Maybe you're not utilizing your classrooms correctly. So if you don't know that, you don't have any business building a school. Now, at the property committee, you told me this, the KCBA people were building a standalone building, right? Standalone. No other considerations associated with it. How does that work? Don't you have to consider stuff that Mr. Earnshaw just said about Warsester Elementary and the population throughout the district when you're going to do a building project? As opposed to just building a standalone building that you think needs to be replaced? Because it's going to get replaced. $35 million is already spent. Who is the solicitor during the Skyview project, do you know? Because my recollection, it was Sweet Stevens. Right? We're back in the same boat again with the same solicitor. Did the solicitor review the contract with KCBA Architects, do you know? Maybe you can give me that answer. Looks like the answer to that one could be no, and I'd be curious as to why he wouldn't review it. Are you guys aware that KCBA Architects has a relationship with Fidavia? Anybody know? Anybody aware? Anybody aware? Wow, don't have to make a face, it's true. You know, I think that's something you need to look into and consider. Back in May of this year, it appears that a decision was made or considered to have KCBA continue on as the architect. Any of you guys aware of that? May 15th. Dr. Zerby, as we discussed, I've outlined below a breakdown of a potential schedule and fees related to a new 625-student elementary school at the existing Arrowhead Elementary site. Over the summer, we would work with you under current agreement at no additional fee as a continuation of the current study to develop a preliminary design concept for the board's review. Anybody aware of this? Like, it's all a done deal, $35 million. Then they go on to the fees. September through December, 271 grand. January to May, 400 grand. June to October, 600 grand. Bidding, 90 grand. Construction administration costs, 361 grand. This is all KCBA, man. KCBA's already on the scene, ready doing, they're, you know, they're building the school. What do you guys have to say about that? We want to get an answer on that one? Because really, I mean, you guys, you know, Brian can talk all he wants, they're building a $35 million school. They're building it. Here's some proof.
Thank you, Dr. Malik. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? Mr. Andrews?
John Andrews, Lower Providence. There's some discussion here in the last 10 or 15 minutes about, basically, in my opinion, it's about the decision to go forward with Arrowhead or Arrowhead forward with highly inadequate deliberations and inputs as to what do we do with excess capacity at Skyview Arcola. The Arcola building, it's the second largest, the Arcola part of that building is the second largest structure in the district. It's second to the high school. It's at 58% capacity. In my mind, it's inexcusable that this district goes forward on the Arrowhead project when there's 42% of one building that is excess and available and located in a decent location in the district. One aspect of things is the money to build a new school, to pay the interest on the bonds, to staff the building. We just don't have the deep pockets that some people blindly think we have. And I've several times said that in the January presentation by the administration, the functional capacities under various options had inaccuracies, were wrong, and I submitted a document later in January that corrected those, and nothing has been done to fix the inaccuracies. It seems to me that the board should not be silent if they're getting shoddy work. And relative to all of this, the, there was testimony last week in Congress, a semi-annual monetary policy report by Chairman Jerome H. Powell of the Fed. And in a couple of brief paragraphs, he described his job, and you might want to think about what he says as to how it pertains to your job as a director. He said, "Let me start by saying that my colleagues and I strongly support the goals of maximum employment and price stability that are embodied in a congressional law. We are committed to providing clear explanations about our policies and activities. Congress has given us an important degree of independence so that we can effectively pursue our statutory goals based on objective analysis and data. We appreciate that our independence brings with it an obligation for transparency so that you and the public can hold us accountable." It's a very nice and clear statement and a worthwhile statement as to what a public administrator is obligated to do to be responsible to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Anyone else for courtesy of the floor? All right. Any further comments from the board before we adjourn? All right. Take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Reese, I'm the second. Ms. Hall, meeting adjourned.